Good evening, everyone. It is 5:45, so we're going to call to order the joint session of the HRA City Council and Planning Commission. Thank you all for attending. It is November 18th, 2019, for those listening on the video recording. And I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Stark.
That one is, there's one that's broken, and that might be it.
Is that any, oh, that's much better. So, thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Mayor. It's great to see a, you know, 100% turnout from everybody here. We are here to, for our second work session discussion on the development proposals for 6501 Penn Avenue South that are known as the Bumper-to-Bumper Auto Parts Site. I don't have much in the way of introduction. I think I'm going to pass this right along to Housing Manager Julie Urban, and she will give you a little bit of background and introduce the developers again. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Supple, Mayor Reagan Gonzalez, Commissioners and Council Members. So, we were back here, back in September, talking about this property. As you know, the HRA purchased this property back in January. It's the, we call it the Bumper-to-Bumper Site at 6501 Penn Avenue. And so, we are seeking a developer for the property, and we've had two teams that have been interested. They presented their concepts back in September, but you felt like you needed more information, and asked them to come back with more information. So, we asked them to look a little bit more at what would the project be like if it was just the HRA property? And what would it be like if some of the adjacent properties were purchased in part of the proposal? You asked just what level of affordability they could commit to, and also what type of commercial could be realistically expected. You asked them to take a consideration of whether they could incorporate accessible units, how green space might be incorporated, and just how the project meets the city's goals. So, I'm going to mostly just let the two developers give a second presentation for you, so I'm not going to go through what I put in the staff report. I'll let them do that. But we just, you know, wanted to be clear about the direction that we're seeking, and so, under direction needed, in your staff report, we did talk about sort of what we see as staff, as sort of the choices between the two projects. And one of it is scale. One has smaller buildings, and one has a larger building, and that hasn't necessarily changed, but they are clarifying sort of how that will work if they're able to obtain adjacent property or not. I think it's a question about the greater number of housing units in one proposal, or in the case of the other one, where they can offer deeper affordability in housing units. How important that commercial space should be and what it should be, so to think about that yourself. For you to think about which project maybe best fits with the neighborhood and with the character of Penn Avenue, and which project provides the best transition to the neighborhood to the west. And I do want to point out, Commissioner Hayford O'Leary did point out that across the street, so east of Oliver Avenue, that is guided for medium-density residential housing. So, he would encourage you to think about the transition in terms of future land use on the east side of Oliver. So, that's just something to point out. And then finally, something for you to think about is just, you know, which of those elements do you see as having the highest priority? Maybe we can't get a development that meets all those needs, and so, we need to know kind of what your priority is. And at the end, we actually have an evaluation form. We wouldn't be asking you to vote at this point. That wouldn't be appropriate or legal. So, what we're just asking for is, number one, that you ask your questions of the developers, and then, two, we'll have an evaluation form. At the end, though, we just ask you to fill out anonymously to help give us some guidance to move forward. The next step would be to take that to the HRA as the property owner. They will ultimately decide which project to put forward.
Can you tell us how much time we should set aside so people have time to fill out that evaluation form? Is it like a five-minute or 10-minute?
Well, you can, you can take it with you, and just email me if you would like. Take a picture of it and send an email, or however you want to do that. So, you can fill it out at the end if you'd like. It's hard to say if you'll feel like you can, I mean, I could pass it around right now just so you can see these are the items that we're thinking you're looking for. There's also another, if there's a category you feel that's missing. So, I'll go ahead and do that. But we're going to start. We're going to just switch order this time, so the team of Locas, NHH and Boyclaire are going to present. And if it's Adam and Adam or when who's going to present, I'll just ask them to come forward. Everybody, the whole team, and Lori and Mike as well, so. Here, I will give you.
Hello?
Hey, everybody. Wow, this is nice and loud. Okay, well, thank you again for having us here. It's a pleasure to be back. We've also had the opportunity to meet some of you in this process, and greatly appreciate the opportunity to have the possibility to continue the conversation here. We have more people up here than before, so we're going to delve into more detail on some things that you had asked us about, including affordability, equity, a lot of the community goals, community outreach. And we tend to think about these in three categories, I guess, for ease of memory. People, place and possibility. And our team really believes that the catalyst here for Penn is rooted in those three ideas. People, place and possibility. On the side of people, we're committed to affordable housing, not only having it, but offering a deeper and wider breadth. Equity is very important as we think about that. We want to reach communities that are more often marginalized, so again, going deeper with that issue. Thinking about community outreach as not only activating the street front and engaging people on Penn Avenue, but also on 65th. So, our diagram has changed a little bit there to incorporate 65th more. And to think more about this process here, how can, from day one, we bring people into the community process as we learn from one another to help build this project? In terms of place, it's very important that we think about a phased approach. Our team thinks that we need to get going right away, starting with that northwest corner that's already held by the city, and then working with the community to better figure out Phase B and C, both of which are not dependent upon one another. It's important that these things are appropriately scaled, that they work with the corridor that's Penn, but also think about how they integrate to the east, and think about Oliver Avenue, especially as it was mentioned with that medium-density zoning. Lastly, integrated infrastructure. We have great opportunity here to activate the street front in other ways besides offering commercial space, thinking about the transit stop at 65th, thinking about public art and green space. Possibility, super important here. How is this thing going to be a catalyst for the neighborhood? This is the first thing that's going to go up on Penn in a long time of substance. And as you can see with the voids in, along Penn, there's a lot of opportunity for future development. So, I think it's important to acknowledge, and we believe it as a team, that we're setting a precedent here, something that if we don't start working with the community from day one, it could send the wrong direction. So, we want to be inclusive on this process. And to do that, we believe we're a strong design team. We're going to be inclusive and come up with a beautiful building. Lastly, economic development. Possibility really relies on working with the current businesses, as well as thinking about how Penn can develop further. We're the hometown team. We've got a lot of projects here in south, and we have numerous throughout the metro area, but tons around here. And I think we can do a great job. We're very proud of being a part of the neighborhood. As we look forward, thinking about place and possibility, this really is an opportunity for redevelopment. Clearly, there's lots of room for future projects, and starting it off here at this northwest catalyst is extremely important. Let's replace these dilapidated buildings and get something going right away. We're going to look into, starting at the northwest corner, and acquiring to the east and south as it best suits the community. We're looking at Phase A, the next slide. Looking at place here, similar to last time, but we've expanded on a 65th street, increasing our commercial potential, getting more street activation on 65th. We also have increased the dwelling unit count, depending on how we arrange the units, and we'll get into that a little bit more later, but that we can get several more units on there, up to six stories in height, and again, utilizing that existing curb cut off of Penn Avenue. As we look to Phase B, we start to create a mirrored L-shaped plan. This is to include townhomes, about 10 dwelling units there, to help augment a variety of housing type, but also to create in the center a beautiful and large green space that can be utilized by all the community members. The access is shown on the north there, but we can also talk through and think about other access opportunities to the east at Oliver, or even possibly using the existing curb cut, depending on the community's desire. As we look to Phase C, we expand to the south, increasing the dwelling units here, offering more commercial space on the ground floor, and bringing more street activation to Penn. The next slide shows us, in a massing diagram, helping to understand the stepping, the phasing, the appropriate scale, moving eastward to Oliver Avenue. I think it's also important that the variated scale helps to give a different way of looking at Penn Avenue. Not all the buildings are the same. We have the opportunity to create more identity on the street. In total, we're looking at 70 to 88 units, about 116 parking stalls, and several thousand square feet of green space. The central plaza showing about 6,000. We're going to get now into some of the unit mix and affordability topics, and I'm going to gently hand this delicate microphone over.
All right. Good evening. Thank you for having us again. So, my name is Lori Boyclaire. I'm the president of Boyclaire Corporation, and we have been affordable housing developers since 1974. So, we're going on 45 years of various types of affordable housing, various income and rent levels and restrictions. We are proposing here at the bumper-to-bumper site to do a variety of subsidy depending upon financing. So, we would submit to Minnesota Housing for either a 9% or a 4% tax credit. We would propose to do income averaging, so we can hit deeper subsidy units, 30% to 80% of area median income. We are also proposing to do S-811 units, that is, project-based rental assistance that is administered from Minnesota Housing, but you get your referrals from the Department of Human Services. So, those are individuals who qualify for disability through Medicaid and/or state-funded programs. And that's a variety of programs that the Department of Human Services get referrals from. It can be anywhere from chronic mental illness to physical disabilities to long-term homelessness. So, there's a variety of applicants that would be qualified for this housing. We, with that, have numerous accessibility requirements, and I know that was a question that was posed to the development team. We are not only per code and per the Fair Housing and the Disabled Act, excuse me, I'm going to try to be able to coordinate this. We also have deeper restrictions or affordability requirements wherein our units would also be hearing and vision impaired. So, they would have both audible and visual alarms, tactics signage, in addition to audible and visible doorbells. We also have restrictions that all interior dwelling units doorways are 32 inches, so they're fully accessible to disabled individuals. We have a no-step, at least one entrance, no-step requirement, so they're fully accessible. These are accessibility requirements that we will go and implement into the development above and beyond what is mandated by code. The S-811 units that are allowed are up to 25%. Usually, you can get allocated or awarded up to 25% of your total unit count for S-811 units. So, if you did 100 units, you'd have 25 units that would be S-811-qualified. Here in my portfolio of about 1,300 affordable units, we have S-811 units, we have project-based Section 8 units, we have Lytech Low Income Housing Tax Credit units, I have long-term homelessness units, I have Section 236 units, 202 senior units. So, we have and provide a gamut of affordable housing and adhere to all of the government regulations and policies, so we're well-versed in affordable housing.
This was posted publicly, and so, we had some questions from some of the disability advocates in the community. And one of the questions was, will the vision and hearing impaired modifications be on top of physical?
Yes.
Modifications? So, it'll be both? It won't be instead of?
Correct. Correct. It'll be all-inclusive.
Then the second one had to do, like, you're talking about interiors. There's a number of things that are really great. Are there also ways to access the sidewalk so that people can get to the transit without having to go through the parking lots and things like that?
Correct. We'll adhere to those accessibility too. It kind of goes hand-in-hand with the no-step entrance. You have to have at least one no-step entrance. So, it leads out into the exterior accessibility as well.
Thank you.
So dainty. Okay. We can go to the next side, Lynn. Thanks. So, that was a lot of information. I think it's, we want to remind us, too, that this is more than numbers. This is really about community. And I think to activate streets, we need to be inclusive of people in the whole process. Very important. So, we want to work with local businesses. Gordon and David were here last time. I think we, our first step would be to start to reach out with people if we were chosen, and get some meetings lined up to start activating and thinking about how this is going to come together in the best way for the whole community. The other ways of creating some community, I think, can also be including people from the get-go on these meetings. How can we get more people here that can't otherwise be here? Folks with families or other, sometimes marginalized communities. I think reaching out to those folks is really important. Yeah?
Excuse me. So, when he mentioned families, I just wanted to also highlight affordable housing. There is a requirement, if you are allocated 9% tax credits, that 75% of your units have to be twos and threes, and 25% of it have to be threes. So, the development will be inclusive of families.
Thanks. Good point. Thank you. As we look to the actual commercial space, I think it's also exciting to think about it not being a static thing, like, oh, this is just going to be a gym or whatever. It's important to think about, again, how the community can start to integrate into it. So, lots of things we've discussed include maker space, business incubator, pop-up pilots, offices for affordable housing services. I mean, some of this space can actually be used to help support some of the things that Lori was discussing in more detail. Play areas for children, this cherry-up thing in the middle. We've worked with them in their space in Minneapolis, and a little space can go a long way for these people. Play areas, as I mentioned, restaurants, gyms, community rooms, things that feed both the residents and the immediate neighborhood. Of course, Penn Fest, something we've participated in, and our own office is Open Streets on Nicolet. And I think having these things be a part of the community is really important, too. Green space is really obviously important, and it doesn't have to be limited to just that large plaza that we're showing at 6,000 square feet. We can start thinking about vertical edges. How can we bring green space into some of the private units in form of balconies? Artwork, also important. That bus stop, when people are waiting, let's bring some life to that corner as well. As we look further to the rest of the green space, the plaza itself can be really magical. I think there's a lot of variety shown here, a lot of different textures, permeable paving, trellises, covered spaces, activating things year-round, allowing for ballgames where kids can play, but also adults can gather. As we look to the next slide, a great precedent for this is Wyzetta. This is a wonderful place where we could even have larger events, maybe part of Open Street spills into this lower courtyard. As we move forward, we remember people, place and possibility. Really important that we focus on the affordability component, that people really make the place. And we believe we're the strong design team that will get us there, and thank you so much for considering us and putting up with this adorable microphone.
Thank you. Mr. Stark, did you want to have both presentations and then have questions, or do you want to take five minutes for questions?
Well, I think maybe a little bit of both. What about just a couple of minutes of questions for each, and then at the end, maybe open it up as there's time.
All right. So, is there anyone that has a question they would like to ask at this time? Commissioner Hayford O'Leary?
Please scroll back to the one with the three phases shown. So, my questions, I mean, I really, yeah, the, either one of those is good. So, your Penn Avenue stuff, I'm very excited about. It looks really nice, but I'm really concerned are questions about Phase B. I was just looking at what those three properties are worth that you'd have to acquire, and it'd be 800,000 to a million plus to get the property for 10 townhomes. And that's quite a bit more than NHH paid for Townhome Land on the other end of town. So, I'm concerned about, we move forward with Phase A on the assumption Phase B could happen when it doesn't really seem like the money would be there in 10 townhomes to justify buying out four existing units to build those. So, I guess I'm wondering, first off, is that assumption wrong? Is that something you've looked at? And then, second, why townhomes versus apartments, particularly when the rest of the block is three-story apartment buildings?
Well, not to get into too much detail, but yes, your assumption's correct. The overall land basis would be relatively high in relation to the unit count. Taking a look at our Cedar Point 2 project, the land basis was very high, actually on a per-door basis, much higher than what it would be here. But there are different programs that we can work with through Met Council and the state to make those numbers work without throwing too many details on the table. As far as how we're looking at the site plan, one thing we have to remember is this is step one of 100. If we were to be chosen tonight or through the process, the odds of this exact site plan with the unit count being put into the ground are very slim. If you look at the designing process of any project and where it actually ends up, there's a lot, a lot of change that happened throughout the process. Cedar Point 2, as an example, that project changed completely throughout the four years of planning and design that we went through. This is step one. This is concepting. And if you look at what we did at Cedar Point 2, we did the door-knocking campaign where we literally knocked on doors and asked neighbors what they thought. The neighborhood meetings, the ARC meetings, all of the public process meetings that you're involved in, and the project evolves from there. So, could we go more dense on Oliver Avenue? Absolutely. You've seen the density that we provided at Cedar Point 2. We have 310 units or so. On that site, we could absolutely put apartments on Oliver Avenue right now, based on what is currently there and what the plan looks like. My opinion is that would be a tough sell. And if you look at what we did with Cedar Point 2, and I'm using that as an example because it's in the ground, and you could literally drive by there tonight or tomorrow to see my example. The conversation that we had time and time again as a development team when looking at density with Cedar Point 2, because you have on the east side, big box commercial, then you have a street, and then you have high-density residential, and it trickles down into a neighborhood where you have 900 to 1,300 square-foot, single-family homes. So, dealing with that transition was very difficult. In the end, we came to the conclusion that having a five- or six-story building on Richfield Parkway, integrating it into a two-and-a-half to three-story townhome on 16th Avenue, and then letting that trickle down to the existing single-family residences that are there is something that would work. Same scenario here. We haven't given you detail, so I expect the questions, and I expect to have these type of conversations, but we haven't given you details to what those townhomes could potentially look like. My vision today, and it could very well change down the line, would be something similar to what we're doing at Cedar Point 2. Two stories of housing over parking, so you have a three-story product. If you drive by our Cedar Point 2 townhomes, to the bottom of the joists is about 33 feet, and then, once the trusses go on, the very top of the structure will be about 38 feet, I think it's 3710. So, that is a very good transition between what we're proposing as far as five to six stories on Penn Avenue and single-story homes that are existing. And if you were to put in a, call it, three- to six-story building on the other side of Oliver, you wouldn't have a significant change in overall elevation and height.
Okay. I think that's helpful. I would still say if that east side were developed as, say, three-story apartments in the future, which is allowed in our comp plan, it would seem awkward to me to build these townhomes to be surrounded on three sides by three-plus-story apartments, but I appreciate the clarification. Thank you.
Thank you. We're going to go to Councilmember Whalen and then Commissioner Laban.
Thank you, Chair. I was going to ask if, knowing that the funding, the funding options to make the affordability happen are pretty competitive, if you were not to receive that funding, how would that change the project? Would that eliminate any affordable units, or what would kind of the new, new options be?
Well, we are affordable housing developers, so we would stay at it. I have actually taken 11 years to get one project done, four years to get another done with affordability requirements. So, that is the nature of affordability. But if you position it correctly and score high enough, and you, after, you know, doing this for 30-plus years, you kind of know where the score threshold is and what the state is looking for in that year's qualified allocation plan, you can posture it so you score high. In doing that, the S-811 helps. Long-term homelessness helps. It's what are their priorities? And those are really two high priorities for affordable housing. So, I don't have any, you know, overly concerns that this isn't going to be competitive, because we posture it, so it is.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Laban.
Thank you. One of the things that I, you know, when I looked at these two projects, and I'm seeing both of them have the opportunity, the potential to, to use all three of these lots that are available. And I guess I found the comments a little bit discouraging that there's really, I mean, there's never certainty, but even the language you were using indicates that, hey, we may get the townhomes and we may not. Four to six years in development timeline for the affordability piece. To me, you know, we, as a commissioner, I would not want to see these types of projects' language. I would not want to see these types of visions take that long to come to fruition. What can, how can I, how can I be a little bit more certain that, you know, if the decision is to go with your company, that something like this will develop, and it won't languish in... in partially-developed, undeveloped stages? I mean, we've seen that before, and that's not the direction Richfield needs to go.
Yeah, I'm going to take it just from the affordability perspective, but also the development perspective. So if it is the HRA's desire to have affordable housing, that is part of the development process. Doesn't matter what developer you do choose from an affordability perspective. There is a timeline, and I can tell you the timeline isn't quick. Even after you get an allocation from the state, which they're allocating their proposals next week, they always claim, well, it takes us one year to close. Now, you can push that, I've closed within six, seven months in doing so. It also, on your underwriter, on whatever debt you choose, it's the same, but encouragingly enough, when I quoted past history, the Department of HUD has a new program. It's a pilot program, which I'll have to boast, I was the first in the country to close under it, and we closed in August. And instead of a 210-day underwriting, we did it in 24 days. So we closed within 60 days. So all of those that I quoted, they are speeding it up, they are putting the emphasis on affordable housing, which we all know is important. From a development standpoint, I think we all can stand here today and say, that's our goal. The townhomes is probably the wild card, I don't think the other two are, and the townhomes is, you know, really more getting community input, getting the HRA's input, getting the council's input, and then determining, I think, on that particular piece, what is the best and highest use. I can tell you the other two, for me and for our conversations as a development team, are pretty much in play, pretty strong. We're here today promoting it, so I think just the wild card is the townhomes.
Would it be fair to say that as the affordability component escalates, the financing for the project becomes more complex and more at risk?
I'd like to thank everybody for the opportunity to come back here and present our vision
Not more at risk, more complex and more fun.
for the site known as Bumper to Bumper, as well as the adjacent parcels.
Don't do anything that's not difficult. You know, we've been doing it for 45 years, so, again, notably, I like to always say, you know, I just closed the first in the country, and Ben Pearson, the head of HUD, sent his assistant in town two weeks ago to tour with me, so I'm pretty versed in the
Moving forward here, in order to save time, this is a subject site location, I think
financing of affordable housing.
All right, thank you.
we're all very familiar with it.
Given the time, I want to make sure we have equitable time for the other groups, so I
Moving on, our concept summary.
think we'll switch over and save any further questions for the end.
Effectively, we're looking at three different options, similar to the other development team. First, A is a mixed-use five-story building located on the bumper-to-bumper site. Second would be a mixed-use building that scrolls over to the east and covers the three residential parcels to the east of the property. And our option C would incorporate those two formally, and B, as well as the commercial property known as the K-9 College to the south. Site plan for option A, and I apologize for the size of this, but simply, it's a mixed-use office, commercial, residential building located simply on the bumper-to-bumper site. We feel that this is a option for the property as is, but we feel strongly about the opportunity within this area as a whole along Penn Avenue and considering the 2040 Richfield Plan, as well as the bump, or as well as the Penn Avenue corridor plan, that we feel this might not be the best use of the overall space that we're considering. Skipping over B, I want to talk specifically about option C, which we think is the most viable and best option for this site. We believe that it provides the maximum usage for the area in both what we see the city via its 2040 Plan, as well as the Penn Avenue corridor Plan, where the city wants to take this area. Specifically, this site plan incorporates two levels of underground parking to allow for heated space for the residents. Moving up, we also offer two levels of surface parking to allow for the commercial space on the northeast corner of the property, as well as visitors to the residence to park and not have to use the underground parking, makes it very easy for them to use the businesses and access the building. Of note, we did try and incorporate as much green space as humanly possible onto this 1.5-acre space. As you can see, along the boulevard, along Penn, we've incorporated plantings, and then it further works its way around the perimeter of the site, as well as it is in play next to the commercial space on the northwest corner of the internal parking. And again, I apologize for the size of this. Moving forward, what we're looking at here is the first level, which would be ground level from the Penn and 65th Corner. Specifically, in the northwest corner, we have a 4,000-square-foot food and beverage facility. Our vision is for a local tap house where people can come and gather and enjoy each other's company. As you move south along the Penn Avenue streetside, we envision a glass-filled co-working space that we will own and operate. Currently, we own and operate a co-working facility in West St. Paul. Moving further down, we're trying to incorporate the live-work idea and also the walkability of the neighborhood by providing walk-up units in the southeast, southwest corner of the site, approximately 10 walk-up units there. And then looking at the east side of the site plan, you can see the upper deck parking, which would provide for a two, two-and-a-half-level eastern elevation to the site, which would then back up to the Oliver, the single-family, and then further zone multi, or medium-density residential units to the east of the site. The remaining levels, two through five, will consist of apartments, approximately 160 apartment units with affordability and accessibility built in. To speak, before I move on, to speak to that, in regards to the affordability, we're looking at a 20% of the units to be rented to 50% of AMI. We're going to keep it relatively simple there. Financing can get very complicated, and in order to expedite the process and keep it as few moving parts as possible, and in development, that's very difficult, that is our plan. And in regards to the accessibility, we plan to use our relationship that we built with Frazier on another property that we've done in Richfield, on the Novo Apartments. We had an excellent partnership with them and brought accessible units to the Novo Plan. Right now, we have three to four fully-accessible zero-barrier entry units, and I know there was a question on that, and I'll address that. But we hope that that's a baseline, and we hope that our partnership with Frazier will allow us to bring more accessible units, both with their organization, but then also allowing for other organizations to come in and use that as well, and individuals and To provide a kind of, an idea of what we're looking at in regards to the overall design features, again, we're looking at a strong northwestern commercial space accented by our tap house on the northwest. Again, class moving down and the brownstone walk-ups. I think this image also exemplifies what we're looking at in our vision in terms of having a innovative and active space in which, as you come down Penn and see this, it draws your eye, draws your attention, and it provides for walkability and accessibility and the option for getting out in the community for other residents in the surrounding area. This is another vision of ours, is to provide green space. Here, we show plantings which help break up the five-story exterior off of Penn, also the use of ground plantings, and again, providing a walkability to the neighborhoods, to the neighbors and residents of the space. In addition to our green space along the side of the buildings and in the back, we also have our rooftop deck design concepts. What we're visioning is a communal rooftop deck where residents can enjoy the great skyline view, both north and south, it'll be a wonderful sunset and sunrise, while grilling, reading, playing and exercising just as they'd like to do in their own backyard. These, again, are images of our rooftop deck concepts. Again, a plethora of different spaces to sit. People like to either be out in the open, kind of tucked away. We'd like to provide all types of spaces for our residents, and building in both vertical and horizontal green space. Again, here's another view of a rooftop deck concept. Apologize here, let me scroll those. Again, more plantings, additional green space, and different seating arrangements, fire pits, and that beautiful view of downtown, east, west, north, or south. In addition to green space on the rooftop deck and surrounding the perimeter of the space, we also would like to incorporate a garage screening concept to the site on the east where it would border the Oliver, currently, single-family homes. Effectively, this is a living screen in which vertical cables are incorporated into the outside of the garage and will soften the impact of a two-story garage located directly adjacent or across the street from, which is currently, single-family residences. This is more of a 2D view of that space, and then I'd like to also incorporate some actual photos, so this is effectively what that space would look like. It wouldn't be a hard metal or concrete space that the residents along Oliver would be looking at. And with that, and in order to keep it a timely presentation, I'd like to open it up for discussion.
Are there any questions? Okay, Commissioner Lavin.
Right now, I think your parking's estimated at 1.15 or 1.25 for stall. Does that include the commercial space? I'm thinking a taproom's going to, you know, be fairly popular in this community. How would that, do you feel that's adequate?
We do. We've taken a look at it, and right now, the minimum is one and a quarter. We believe that the inclusion of both the underground parking, as well as the surface level and upper deck parking, will facilitate the use of the commercial space during its busier hours, and yet still give residents a place to park.
All right, Commissioner Vries-Daniels.
Thank you. Two questions. One, what is your mix of unit size that you're projecting?
Our mix of units?
One-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom?
One-bedroom, two-bedroom, one-and-a-half, and studio.
Okay. And then what does that green wall look like in the winter?
Depending on the plantings, I believe the original picture was a picture of one in Texas.
Yeah.
Very nice. We would be, we'd be working on that. There are certain greens that do stay green during the winter, a few of them, but we would be working with our landscape architects in order to determine the best green space for that area. Thank you.
Other questions? All right, Commissioner Lavin.
I'll ask the same question that I asked the other developer about the potential for acquiring those lots to the east. A lot of the diagrams that you've shown, including the background, things like that, are dependent on that acquisition, so.
So currently, we have one of the single-family homes under contract. We're in negotiations with the other two currently, and as well as the K-9 College. So we feel strongly that this is our best option, that will really maximize the use of the space, which is why we're standing here today, so. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, it does.
You said you would come back to the issue of accessibility, so can you define what you mean by fully accessible?
Yes, and to specifically answer that, I believe the question was, what is the definition of zero barrier? And I don't think Webster has an exact one, but our definition would be zero, pardon me, zero step, yes, into the unit, as well as the bathrooms, also roll under cooktops, et cetera, so I believe that is, well, no, I know that's our vision, does that answer your question?
There was also the question about, like, will it be roll-in showers and things like that?
Yes, roll-in showers, yes.
And then as far as the outdoor, we'll ask the same question we asked the other developers, like, can people get in and out of the front of the building and not have to go through the parking lot for accessibility?
Yes.
Are there additional questions? Commissioner Heford-Lee?
So I'm wondering if you can clarify, I'm just trying to look at the site plan and figure out, when you're talking about the green wall, when I saw your site plan, that eastern panhandle, I assumed to be like, the first floor was parking, and then there were apartments above? Am I understanding that it's actually like a multi-story parking garage, or what's, what is that eastern?
Oh, I have a laser pointer.
Yeah, so the thing that says garage parking, that little rectangle in the northeast corner, is that just several floors of parking, or are there apartments above the parking?
This is quasi-underground, I mean, as the, as the site moves from west to east, it slopes down, so this will be coming out of the ground.
Okay.
What we have underneath this deck parking is surface-level parking, so along this eastern wall, what you'll see is original, or the first surface level, and then the upper deck built on top of it. So from this area here, looking back west, apologize for this. This is effectively what you'd be looking at, it'd be about story and a half, two stories.
Okay.
Sorry, is that?
Yeah, that does answer my question. I will say, I really, I don't like that, for, my concern's about townhomes versus apartments or whatever on that site. A blank wall, whether it's, it happens to be green, or it happens to be cinder blocks, is not very neighborly.
There'll be apartments above that.
Well, yeah, but I thought he was saying the surface lot was also going to have this blank wall facing Oliver. Is that right, or is the surface lot on grade with Oliver?
The surface lot would be right along Oliver, as well as the deck on top of it.
But this, if you're, if I'm standing on Oliver, is this what I will see looking towards your development?
As we currently have it planned, yes.
Okay, that's unfortunate. I really do like your land use, but that, this, the details about Oliver concern me a lot about that parking lot's presence on Oliver.
I think to specifically, or to maybe answer what you're getting at, is what we felt the massing really needed to be pushed to the northwest corner of the property and really have a strong urban feel along Penn, and have it gradient down to soften the impact between a strong, strong position on Penn versus...
upper deck built on top of it, so from this area here, looking back west, apologize for this. This is effectively what you'd be looking at, it'd be about storying off two stories.
Okay.
Sorry, is that?
Yeah, that does answer my question. I will say, I really, I don't like that for, my concerns about townhomes versus apartments or whatever on that site, a blank wall, whether it's, it happens to be green or it happens to be cinder blocks, is, is not very neighborly.
There'll be apartments above that.
Well, yeah, but I thought he was saying the surface lot was also gonna have this, this blank wall facing Oliver. Is that right, or is the surface lot on grade with Oliver?
The surface lot would be right along Oliver, as well as the deck on top of it.
But this, if you're, if I'm standing on Oliver, is this what I will see looking towards your development?
As we currently have it planned, yes.
Okay, that's unfortunate. I really do like your land use, but that, this, the details about Oliver concern me a lot about that parking lot's presence on Oliver.
I, I think, to specifically, or to maybe answer what you're getting at, is what we felt, the massing, really needed to be pushed to the northwest corner of the property, and really have a strong urban feel along Penn, and have it gradient down to soften the impact between a strong, strong position on Penn versus where we're looking at it currently now, which is single-family residences on Oliver. I know there's a future plan for medium density, so, but not to completely incorporate apartments around the space, or otherwise, we would not have enough space for parking. We're dealing with 1.5 acres right now, and if we go down another parking garage level, we're going to be hitting groundwater.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions? All right. Thank you. As far as our, our procedure here, now that we've heard from both development teams, do we want to talk about the choices to consider, or do we want to have, give people time to fill out your evaluation proposal?
Well, we, we give just a little bit of, I took some notes, of reaction. I know that the staff report included some staff feedback. I would say, you know, a group of us, staff members, representing a number of different ways of looking at this, met and looked at it. We, we only were able to look at what we had in front of us, so we don't have any financial data, so we did not look at which one would, would or would not be financially feasible. We just didn't have enough information to make that determination. To be honest, we didn't look as much at the commercial space, so there's a little less scrutiny on that. We were primarily looking at site planning and architecture, and on the affordable housing, especially the affordable housing experience, and so based on that feedback, our recommendation would be the, the group that presented first here tonight. I will say, though, that, you know, we've, we've met with both teams a bunch of times now for long periods of time, and we would be absolutely thrilled to work with either of them. They've been great to work with. I, I think, you heard the first group say this, though, these proposals will evolve, and so, you know, I'm always leery, and especially, I'm not a big, as some of you might know, I'm not a big fan of the RFP process. I don't like, you know, forcing developers to give you a dog and pony show, because I hear then, months later or years later, that, well, you know, they didn't, they showed us a bunch of pretty things, but weren't able to deliver, and that's a little bit the nature of the beast. We try to poke at that along the way, but these will evolve. That will involve both progress, things that got better than what you wanted, but it will likely involve some regression, some areas of this that aren't living up to what you'd hoped for, and that's, you know, just the nature of development. Overall, I, these projects always get better as a whole. There will be components, though, that you might not be as, as thrilled with as we go forward. The acquisition of properties out there, I can only give you my opinion. Knowing the little bit I do know about the other commercial property that was referenced as K-9 College, I have a little bit of concern about whether that is, whether that's a willing seller. You know, there's just no indication whatsoever that, that it is a willing seller. We've tried on a number of occasions, in a number of ways, to get ahold of the, the person that owns the property, so they know that we want to talk to them. They haven't talked to us. The houses behind, that's, that's tough, because we, we don't want to get homeowners too worked up about something, so we haven't gone out there and asked the homeowners, you know, are you willing sellers, are you not willing sellers? I think the, for the right price, I imagine that they are willing sellers, but then, as Commissioner O'Leary had mentioned, that the more you end up having to spend on those properties, that's gonna drive up the densities that you would need to make that work. As you drive up the densities, that might increase, you know, the, the neighborhood consternation over the, the project. So I'm just sharing with you some thoughts. In terms of the process going forward, we've got the evaluation form. Our thinking was that some folks process quickly and can do that tonight, some folks need a little bit of time to mull it over. We'd like to get the feedback by Friday. As we said, this isn't a vote. We would take this, depending on kind of the feedback we got, we're hoping then that we would go to the planning, or the HRA in the near future, as the property owners, and say, you know, we're, here's the, the feedback we received from the group, kind of distill it a little bit, and from that, we are recommending we take X course of action, so.
So it sounds like we probably should see if there are any further questions. Commissioner Sandel?
Thank you. The second one indicated it was, thank you, were you on, was, they were looking at 20% of the units would be affordable, and I'm not sure I ever got that number from the first one, maybe they could explain that.
So we would go in for probably 40% at 60%, but we would do income averaging, which would bring that 40% of units to 30% to 80%. Income averaging is new in the last oh, three, four years, and there's final guidance on that. So you get deeper subsidy, and then you can also have some at the higher subsidy to balance out your 60%. And then there would be the 25% of the Section 811 units, so you're looking more around 65%.
So if I'm hearing correctly, you're saying 65% of the whole complex would be affordable?
Would have affordable restrictions, correct?
Okay, thank you.
As a follow-up to that, you had mentioned doing some of the deeper affordability and helping people that might have extra service needs. Does your management company do any, like, wraparound service or things that can help with people that are struggling?
So the Section 811 units that require the extra services, actually are referrals from the Department of Human Services, so they administer their services. If we chose to, and if there was an interest to doing long-term homelessness housing, which I am a proponent of, we use Simpson Housing Services.
All right, that was helpful, I was wondering about that, thank you. Are there other questions? Mayor Reagan-Gonzalez?
I was gonna ask the question about the wraparound services as well. So it sounds like that's something that would, we would be looking at then, and there's different options for, for services.
Which come through the Department of Human Services, correct? For the, for the S811 units, correct?
And then, this is a question, I don't know if this is to staff, or, but this is for, for both developments, so given that there's three, well, there's the, the homes, then there's HRA property, and then the K-9 college, how does it work for both developments to move forward to ensure that we have a complete development and not what we have with Cedar Point 2, where there's a home that is possibly not being purchased, or, or in complete development, moving forward with either of these?
Yeah, I think, I think you would have to know that going in, that there's a possibility, you know, there are, in these projects, essentially three phases in each of them, and that you would have to feel satisfied that you could live with just Phase 1, if that's, if they were not able to acquire the properties for Phases 2 or 3. And if you don't feel like you could live with that, then probably that, we would probably pull back the reins on all of this, and look at whether there's any ability to publicly acquire those other properties. You know, I, I, my gut feeling on that is, that would be awfully difficult for us to do financially, but there, there are no guarantees when it comes to acquiring additional properties.
So it would be, I mean, Phase 1 for both projects, because this is a HRA property, but then, we're not gonna be, we wouldn't be going forward with the Phase 2, or any phase that involves those single-family homes without acquisition of all of the homes.
Yeah, one of the things we talked about as a staff, and depending on how important Phases 2 and 3 are to you, to putting some incentives in the financing, let's, and I, I'm just kind of spitballing for lack of a better word here, you know, the tax increment financing for Phase 1, maybe instead of providing 100% of that as Phase 1 happens, is holding some of that back and saying, we're gonna hold back portions of the TIF for Phase 1, and those will be extra incentives to you if you do Phases 2 or Phase 3, is, is something we talked a little bit about.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Trautman?
Thank you, Chair Supple. Director Stark, I think I have questions, just kind of right in, in the vein of the, the answer that you're giving to, to our mayor. I was wondering how these proj, I was wondering how these projects compare in terms of immediate financing and long-term revenue. I know some of the, some of the programs, do they have an impact on our, on our revenue? Is there, is there a substantive difference between the two proposals that we can see at this stage, understanding some of it's dynamic, but what, is there a, a thrust to both of the proposals?
Well, I would say that, and somebody hinted at this earlier, and I might have a different opinion, that the more complicated the affordable housing is, the more, the more time it's gonna take, and the less certain it is. In the case of the Broadway Investors proposal, when they talk about 20% at 50% of the AMI, I believe they're talking about a housing TIF district, and you, the HRA and City Council have 100% control over that, and so if that's something you support, that would be a certainty. Whereas, applying to Minnesota Housing for low-income housing tax credits, or for other financing mechanisms, that's competitive, that's something out of any of our control. You know, I, I think Richfield would do well, because we don't have any, essentially, low-income housing tax credit, maybe a handful, three or four units, so I know Minnesota Housing would like to find a way to award some of those to us, but the, the uncertainty goes up, as the complexity goes up.
No, that, that's, that's helpful, thank you. I also was gonna mention, with regards to the Locust property, I know there's the, the plaza in the middle, there's green space in the middle, I'd love to see that facing Oliver, and not being hid from, from the rest of it, that might be one way to make that, rotating that building, might, might, just one, one consideration of making that project more neighborhood, neighborhood-friendly.
Commissioner Elliott?
This is in regards to Director Stark's comments about options and, and variations on that. From my perspective, given, given our community and what we've seen happen in the last eight or 10 years, options are gonna be in everyone. I mean, we, we look at Option 1, and that's the base, that's what we've got, but B and C are potentials, and we certainly hope they come to fruition. But I think we need to reconcile ourselves, that we're gonna have to face these decisions, everything that comes up now, just because we're landlocked and we don't have that space. So I think, both, both Options 1 from both presenters, I, I like, and, but I think what we need to do is be fair to them, you know, like you said, circulate the evaluations, get them back, and then let's make a decision and move forward on that, but I think that we're going to have to, to accept the Option 1 and pick the one we like best, and then hope that one or the other can fulfill their identity. That's, that's how we're gonna keep moving, otherwise, we're gonna sit on a bumper-to-bumper for a long time with nothing there, and I don't think that's acceptable to anybody. So, and we're, we're gonna have to be careful, I think, Ms. Boyclaire's experience with affordable housing is great and everything, and going back to what happened with the South Garage 10 years ago, we better be real careful on how we present it, because there're gonna be people in West Richfield, they're gonna push back really hard, and that's just a reality. So we need to recognize that we've got constituents out there that are watching what we're doing also, and we need to incorporate their thoughts, and, and what their perception of their neighborhoods are, and it's, it's tough on our part to make those decisions, but it's there, and we need to deal with it, because otherwise, we get people pushing back real hard, and we start with ill will and bad feelings in a lot of different neighborhoods in the, in the community. So that's something that, that is collateral to this, but it's an important aspect.
Okay, we have time for a couple more questions. Commissioner Holber?
This is similar to what Commissioner Elliott was saying, but for the parcel of land that faces Oliver, where the townhomes currently are in the Locust development, there's potential for that to come before Planning Commission at some point, where that would be high-density housing and the total loss of that green space, correct? Like, because of the zoning code?
You know, you mean if somebody else to come forward?
No, also to what Sean was saying, where that could either, either go from townhomes to high-density, based on their funding, or, you know, how the revenue looks once they've purchased those homes. So if that went to high-density, they would then need more parking, which would take over the green space?
Yep, I don't disagree with any of that, that those are all possibilities.
I just wanted to clarify that, that all of those things are possibilities that could come before the Planning Commission, and that those, that parcel is zoned for all of that. So that's just something that's good to clarify, because I feel like, once it comes to the Planning Commission, there's a lot of people who are like, why would the Planning Commission allow that to happen there, when we said townhomes? But if it's zoned for that, there's not really a lot of leeway we would have.
I think that's accurate.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Okay, we've got time for one more question. Is there someone who hasn't spoken wanting to weigh in before we go back to repeat people? All right, so then, who else is still, we've got two people. If you guys can be brief, you can both go. So Councilmember Whalen, and then Commissioner O'Leary.
I'll just say briefly, I, process-wise, I, I appreciate that, since we haven't all had a chance to speak, and some people aren't ready to lean one way or the other, I appreciate the survey, but also recognize that it's taking away a fair amount of transparency. I'd ask that we, I know it, it gets publicly posted if it's going to be part of HRA staff report for a future decision, but would ask that it get more publicly shared, 'cause I, yeah, it feels a little less transparent to be turning these in. I personally have a huge preference for the Locust property. I did make note of that concern, that there only green space is dependent on the residential area, which is, I think, the most up for debate, but I think, I mean, everyone by now probably knows I, I like affordability, and I am leaning that way, but also just want to point out that their proposal actually happens if they only have Lot A, and that if they get Lot B, or Area B later, they can still do that secondarily, whereas the other one, it's kind of all or nothing at once. They're proposing a connected building, and so if they don't get property right away, that means the big picture's never gonna happen. Those are my thoughts.
Go ahead, and then Commissioner Levin, we have to get out of here in about three minutes.
Okay, my question is simply, it's very clear that Broadway has been talking to the homeowners and their intent, I mean, obviously, Whalen pointed out that there's a trade-off, that their intent is to do it all at once, so my question is, is NHH doing that, or is their intent to do it all in one proposal if they're willing sellers, or is that a future phase that they're not intending to do at this time?
I, I wouldn't want to speak for them.
We have attempted to reach out to what we would call Property C, which is the K-9 College, and as John mentioned, there are some issues with communication with that party. We've talked to the tenants, we have not talked to the building owner, and that is really all the information we have, and we have also not talked to the homeowners across. We felt like that was premature at this point in time.
If you got approval for A, would you be seeking to do B at the same time?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
And Commissioner Levin, you get the last word.
The, a lot of the comments have been around, you know, the, the development, the uncertainty, and I, and I agree with that. I think that some of the things that we should be considering is, if the vision is to develop, you know, at least the, the lot that we have under ownership right now, and to the east, either townhomes or, you know, the, the existing building that's being proposed, I think we really need to think about what developer has the most opportunity to do that, based on the finance structure, and, you know, there's already one that has a homeowner contract. I, I just think that's a relevant, I think that's a relevant topic that we should be considering, otherwise, we will- considering, otherwise we will probably be left with just the single building at the end of the corner and I don't think that's optimal.
Thank you to all of the development companies and to the staff and to all the commissioners and councilmembers. Looks like Commissioner Sandel had one quick question. If you want to go ahead, I think we do have time.
Oh, thank you. It's just a comment and I appreciate former Mayor Elliott's reminding us, 'cause I was there, that the neighbors are not always happy about something they consider low-income housing. We have a policy of 20%. I support that 100%, but I think that was why I asked the question, is what percentage of the whole development would be low-income housing? And so that was my concern and I appreciate you bringing it up in the past.
Thank you, and I believe we stand adjourned.